What the designation means for the city of LA. Stay tuned. A new effort to keep e-scooter riders off the sidewalk gets underway. A community cleanup brings neighbors together and city council members push to reduce gun violence. All this in City Beat. LA City Council President Herb Wesson and Councilmember Greg Smith have introduced a resolution in LA City Council calling on the state of California and the federal government to pass legislation that will reduce gun violence in the U.S. The announcement comes on the heels of three mass shootings occurring within a month's time. Chinatown in downtown LA got a makeover as a bulky items pickup and area cleanup took place thanks to Councilmember Gil Sadio's office.
There's always going to be trash around, but if we help clean the community and more people join, it makes LA look nice.
E-scooters are seen everywhere, but many riders don't follow the rules and ride on sidewalks instead of the streets. That's why Councilmember Paul Carretts is promoting safe and responsible riding through bright yellow decals in his district, reminding riders that it's illegal to ride on sidewalks.
We want to get the word out that it's both illegal and dangerous, and the city is starting to enforce that regulation.
Last week, we introduced you to some special women who offer a platform for female filmmakers. Now we go behind the scenes to see what it takes to put together the Broad Humor Film Festival.
Like I wanted her, Michelle, to connect with at least one other character.
And you know I like the goofy, dark stuff.
This one is one of those ones that's more of a gentle.
So you let it in because, or don't you? Because it's not quite funny, funny, ha-ha. We are a festival that it's about giving women opportunities. It's a four-day event. We screen short films, we screen features, web series, we have a Screenwriters Brunch, we also have a stage reading. That is basically Ocean's Eleven meets Top Gun for women.
Wow, that's funny. Wait, I want to see the first page.
Yeah. All the broads are volunteers. You know, everybody spends the time because A, it's a labor of love, B, half of us are filmmakers, so you know, we know what it's like to, you know, be on the outside looking in, you know, with great content.
We really have such a huge meter of comedy. Like when we first started, remember, it was just, it was like real Broad Humor, like slapstick, remember? And now look at it, it's this nuanced stuff about abortion.
I know, that one's about vibrators.
I know. Broad Humor is important because it is still, after 14 years, the only comedy film festival in the world for women writer, women director, filmmakers. There's enough of those festivals that every one of those people that we're not watching are going to get into a festival. We need to keep focused on the women that are going to have a barrier to access to get their movie scenes.
And it is definitely validating when a film festival accepts your short. As Michelle said, give them their first film festival laurel, and it's a bonus to meet them and program their film.
And I'm always blown away by the first-time writer when they hear their words spoken for the first time by professional actors. But this is, this is one of the things that makes my life richer, is to be able to give the hand to young and even seasoned and marinated women. They're trying to actually get their voices heard through this medium. That's the reason why I'm there, to hear their voices and empower their voices.
I read everything from beginning to end. I watch everything from beginning to end. It's a huge commitment of time. And it's a real struggle to get to that four-day festival every day, every day weekend, because there's just a handful of us. But when you're in it, it's, it's an incredible feeling of, you know, gratitude. You know, giving in, receiving. People just, they're so happy that we are here for them, you know? And I'm happy to be here for them.
Are your kids ready for school? Well, a nonprofit called A Place Called Home is making sure low-income kids have all they need for a successful school year.
So today, we're doing our 19th Annual Backpack to School Event, and we are providing free backpacks and school supplies and other educational materials to over 1,800 youth in the community. This event is actually one of the most popular events. In fact, the first family started lining up at 11:00 a.m. the day before, which is indicative of what the need that we have in this community. Yeah, we have several sponsors, but we also have donors that will do donation drives at their office or at their home.
Our charity is here to help donate items to needy kids. We're here at Backpack 2019, Backpack to School, and we're here just to help the community.
This is such a huge, huge thing for the community to help support the children as they go back to school. And A Place Called Home does a great job and has a lot of resources to help this community with school supplies, backpacks, and just get the kids on the right track and on the right foot for the beginning of the school year.
It's also very special to make sure that we open our doors our time, make a fun event so that the community members that stayed out there overnight have an enjoyable time and they're comfortable as well.
Oh my gosh, amazing, little happy little faces, super excited when they get in here. A little bit overwhelmed because there's, there's a lot to get, but just very happy faces.
Not many parents have like the enough resources or like enough money to be able to buy their kids school supplies or provide them with new backpacks every year, so I think this is helping the kids in our community.
I think it's one less thing for the parent to worry about. It's a relief for them, a little breather, right? So maybe now they can get them something else that they may need because now the school supplies are covered.
For more info on A Place Called Home, visit apch.org. It's a chance for community members, families, and neighbors to spend a night out with local police to boost relations and unite against crime. Here in LA, there were several events, including Union Station.
It's the day where the nation is set aside for the community to become more familiar and engage with their law enforcement and other public safety professionals.
It is an event that, it's the first Tuesday in August every year. In cooperation, LAPD and LASD and Long Beach PD, all three of us, and Metro Transit Policing are together telling people to come out on their doorsteps, come out and join us here at Union Station, let the bad guys know that the neighborhood's in charge.
Lots of times, the community will actually not have any contact with law enforcement unless it's in a negative tone. An officer's pulling you over for a citation, or you're calling them because there's some type of a dispute, or God forbid, something's happening where you're being assaulted or what have you. This is a better way to get to know your police officers, your sheriff deputies, and your public safety professionals. Just as many of us grew up with the understanding that your police officers, your sheriff's deputies, and other public safety professionals were people that you trusted and that you ran to in the time of crisis. And unfortunately, things have happened to kind of tarnish that image a little bit, but with events like this, maybe we can bring that back.
This is really important. In today's times, we've got some bad things that are occurring, and we don't want to see that happening. If all the neighborhoods join together, if we all join together with law enforcement, with everybody, work cooperatively, our country will be a much safer place.
I think it's amazing because it brings out a bunch of people from every single ethnicity and every single crowd, honestly. It's amazing because you see a lot of fun happening right now. There's children, there's elderly, and even millennials. We're all having a bunch of fun, enjoying all of this fun aspect. It's a great night.
National Night Out is an annual event that takes place in cities across the country. Movies, fresh air, and a summer picnic go hand in hand, especially at the 8th Annual Silver Lake Picture Show Movie Series. Anna Marcos takes us there.
It's been eight summers of free outdoor movies and counting. And when you see one of these films, Alfresco, there are some definite must-have items.
So most importantly, we brought popcorn. I love popcorn, make it all the time.
And you got to have it for a movie, right?
Yes, of course, yeah.
It's really nice. Bring the dogs. It's a fun, fun environment. Love it.
This is our neighborhood, this is our community, these are our people, so it's nice to see everybody kind of bonding over movies, isn't it?
The Silver Lake Picture Show Summer Movie Series has kept growing each year since it started in 2012, with between four to seven movies a summer.
We were a couple of filmmakers who had just finished two short films, and we were like, how do we get an audience to see this? In our first year, we used to build our screen out of lumber and canvas. Took two and a half hours to build, two and a half hours to take down.
But nowadays, there's a 30-foot state-of-the-art screen. In tonight's film, The Big Lebowski is about to strike. It's a fitting tribute for the last show of the Silver Lake season, as the bowling alley scenes were filmed right in the area at the former Hollywood Star Lanes.
That's what he calls me, Lebowski. You got the wrong guy. I'm the Dude, man.
Not only do you get the big picture here, you get a smaller, artier one as well, because each film screened here is paired with a short film made by a local filmmaker.
It's a great mix, yeah. These are my kind of people.
And look at that, looks like someone special is making an appearance tonight. Is that who we think it is? I mean, if it looks like the Dude, dresses like the Dude, drinks like the Dude, is it?
And what are you drinking?
This is Nectar of the Gods, aka a White Russian.
Another special drop-in visitor, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, who helps fund the event.
I'm a huge supporter. I am a cinema buff and, and an arts enthusiast and a supporter of the arts and culture, of course, and so we want to support events like this.
And here's another bit of community spirit. The Silver Lake Picture Show also honors a community group each year with a $1,000 donation. This year, it's St. Ant's, which helps low-income families. All in all, a feel-good kind of night.
Set up a chair, bring a picnic, bring your family, and you've got a free night of entertainment.
And by the way, each May before the start of the season, local filmmakers can submit their short films to get screened before the big film screens. Visit silverlakepictureshow.com. Celebrate Asian culture at a music and arts fest, Roaring Nights returns at the LA Zoo, and Little Tokyo pulls out all the stops for the Nisei Week Japanese Festival. All this in Things to Do. 88 Rising's Head in the Clouds Music and Arts Festival makes a return this summer on August 17th at Los Angeles State Historic Park. Returning for year two, the festival will be a day-long celebration of Asian youth culture and creativity, highlighting the best in music, food, art, and fashion from around the globe. 88 Rising's Head in the Clouds lands Saturday, August 17th at 3:00 p.m. For more information, visit 88rising.com. Join the LA Zoo for Roaring Nights, an adults-only multi-genre dance event. This summer party offers interactive art activities, live bands, pop-up zoo talks, and more. Enjoy a silent disco and an open-air lounge with food trucks on site. It's fun for the big kids at Roaring Nights at the Zoo, happening Friday, August 16th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. For details, visit travelzoo.com. The Gay Men's Choir of Los Angeles celebrates Stonewall at 50. This truly historic concert will feature over 500 singers, including members of the New York City's Gay Men's Chorus and 23 other choruses from around the country, in a performance to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots. GMCLA 40 makes joyful noise at the Walt Disney Concert Hall Friday, August 16th. For tickets, visit gmcla.org. Celebrating 79 years, the Nisei Week Japanese Festival brings the streets of Little Tokyo alive with food, culture, arts, and entertainment. Come experience Japanese culture for two whole weekends packed full of free festivities. It's all happening at the 79th Nisei Week Japanese Festival, August 11th, 17th, and 18th, at the Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center. For more details, visit jaccc.org. Join the Special Needs Network for the 14th Annual Back to School Community Health and Resource Fair. Enjoy a fun-filled day for children with autism, special needs, and communities that serve them. You'll find resource vendors, health and mental health screenings, food, free backpacks and school supplies. Festivities kick off at the Urban Magic Johnson Recreation Park. All are welcome at the Special Needs Network's Back to School Fair, Saturday, August 17th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For details, visit specialneedsnetwork.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Good morning to everyone. Would you please take your seats? Shhh. Anyway, I want to welcome everybody to City Hall, to this council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is, uh, welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomfield, Bonin, Puscaín, Osadio, Aristosson, Weeza, Corretts, Kukorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves. Kukorian seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Smith moves. Rodriguez seconds. Next?
Items one through twelve are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's, uh, prepare to vote on these items. Let's, uh, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Please continue.
Item thirteen is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Let's, uh, hold that. If it's, uh, Mr. Kukorian, if that's the appropriate action, we'll hold that. And if you would continue?
Mr. President, that then takes council back to items called special or general public comment.
All right. So at this time, what I would like to do for a very, very special introduction, I'd like to call on, uh, Ms. Monica Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Uh, I have the tremendous privilege to introduce to you all today a friend to many of us who has been working alongside us to help solve some of the city's most toughest challenges. Someone who is no stranger and will be joining us, hitting the ground running day one, my good friend, Councilman-elect John Lee.
Mr. Lee, would you like to say a few? You've been around this horseshoe long enough, but I guess this is the first time, uh, we're gonna ask if you'd like to say something on the mic.
Well, thank, thank you, everybody, and thank you to, uh, the whole council for inviting me to be here. Council President Wesson, thank you for calling me this morning, inviting me down to come be a part of this. First of all, I just want to thank, uh, a few people. Uh, Joe, Monica, Greg, thank you so much for always being there for me and standing behind me. Um, this has been a, it's been a, it's been an interesting four months, and I'm, uh, ready to, uh, you know, the campaigning is over. I'm ready to, to come here and, and start the work. And so, Council President, thank you so much, and I appreciate just allowing me to be here today.
Let's give Mr. Lee another round of applause. So, uh, John, just before you, uh, go do the millions of things I know you have to do, we'll probably chat sometime today or tomorrow. We'll work out transition and timing and all of that. So one more, uh, round of applause for our newest council member. Councilmember-elect John Lee. Okay, what we're gonna try to do, members, we've got a big closed session conversation coming up, but what I want to do is try to at least begin the public comment, uh, period. So I see we have, uh, uh, in fact, we, I should do another introduction, and she's also gonna be the first speaker. Former council member, current school board member, Jackie Goldberg. Could we give her a round of applause? Welcome back to your old stomping grounds. So we're gonna start off with, uh, general public comment. So Ms. Goldberg, I'd like for you to come up first. And then we have Fernando Chacon, Father Estrada, Lisa Marin Hirsch, Victoria Vasquez. And I want to try to get everybody in, so if you can, can quickly come to the, uh, center aisle.
Mr. President, if I may, I would prefer Mr. Chacon to speak before me.
That's fine. Mr. Chacon, you go first, sir? And then followed by Ms. Goldberg.
Good morning, members of the City Council. My name is Fernando Chacon. I am the Program Director of El Centro del Pueblo. We are a nonprofit organization that has been serving the County of Los Angeles since 1974. I am here today on behalf of the children, youth, and families that you see here behind me. They also stand here today in fear. Fear that they will lose the playground that has served to profoundly impact all children of the communities that we are a part of. Never was our agency notified by CD-13's intention to demolish much-needed playground. During our attempt to renew our lease, city surveyors revealed that the playground was projected to be demolished. CD-13 is currently looking to demolish the, and replace children, the children's playground with affordable housing. However, for the record, El Centro del Pueblo does support affordable housing, but we should look at other options.
Thank you, Mr. Chacon.
It does not make any sense why we should take away an asset for another. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Goldberg.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Jackie Goldberg, and when I sat in this council, we built that playground that is now under assault. I am here to tell you that, uh, this community, Echo Park, that I've lived in all of my adult life, supports all kinds of housing for the homeless and for those who are having a struggle keeping, dealing with the high rents in our gentrifying community. But to take an asset like the playground at El Centro del Pueblo, which has for those forty years that I've lived in this district, um, has provided safety for young people in our community, has helped gang members who have been challenged into gangs by a variety of events to get out of those gangs, to become productive members of society. This playground is used by the organization for trauma young people. We know, we all know, there's an increasingly large number of our young people who are living very traumatic lives, unfortunately. And this playground has a part of a federal grant that gives them the opportunity to use that. We all support using the parking lot across the street from this for much larger project. We would prefer it to be all special needs housing, all housing for the homeless. I think that one that they're talking about doing on this playground, not only would we lose the money from the federal government for this trauma, uh, uh, trauma program, but that trauma program helps finance other programs by keeping that agency going. This agency has been critical to our community all of my adult life. It has made everybody feel safer. Unfortunately, public opinion is, is that a lot of the youngsters at El Centro are not welcome at the park across the street because they have tattoos, because they look different, like maybe they're dangerous. This organization is helping to bring those young men and young women back into the community, into productive lives. I'm asking you, find another location. We want it in our neighborhood. We are not opposed to it in our neighborhood. This is a community that has always accepted people, literally, from all walks of life and in all conditions of life. But we really cannot afford to lose this playground in order to get that housing, and I ask our councilmen to please lead us in finding an alternative site. Thank you very much.
Okay, and, and, and Father, Father, before you start, you know, Ms. Goldberg served in this house, and because of that, we always give our former members additional time. But to be fair to everyone else, it's still a minute per speaker. So, Father, the floor is yours.
Okay, good morning, council members. My name is Father Richard Estrada. I'm here today representing Hovens Inc. Uh, for twenty-five years, Hovens Inc. has provided services for homeless youth. We are here today to support El Centro del Pueblo and their efforts to keep their playground open. Our communities lack safe recreational space for families, and the playground provides a haven for people in our community who are not welcome in other recreation, uh, facilities. So we, it, so to hear it, uh, maybe tear it down would be a big blow to us. We are here today as, uh, not as a mere form of protest, but to ask you, Councilman O'Farrell, to display moral leadership. We ask you to be transparent. We ask you to find another place of land for this development, not one that is close to trendy bars and restaurants.
Day.
Okay.
Thank you, Father. Next. And if I could get, uh, Maria Marquez, Jackie Vargas, Juan Ariaga, and, uh, please come forward. Yes, identify yourself.
Good morning, Council President, council members. My name is Lisa Hersh-Marin, and I'm a mental health expert for the past twenty-five years. I'm also a twenty-five-year resident in Silver Lake and Echo Park and the former director of mental health at El Centro del Pueblo. And I'm here to urge you not to, uh, take services away from one vulnerable population of children to serve another vulnerable population of needed affordable homeless housing, which I commend you all for doing, uh, such a great job at helping. We use that playground for therapeutic purposes, for children to have services that include, um, play therapy, that include socialization activities for children with autism. These children don't have other areas with which to practice these therapeutic behaviors, and that is what that playground is utilized for in our mental health facility, and our funding depends on being able to use that facility for those purposes. Please, please, I urge you to find the affordable housing solution that doesn't take these services away from those kids.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, please identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. Uh, my name is Juan Carlos Ariaga, and I had been an active member of El Centro del Pueblo for over ten years. Uh, I started as a twelve-year-old, and, uh, I could guarantee you that that playground has been beneficial to pretty much all our community. We, um, it's part of their system where I, as a, when I started, I did not want to get involved in any of the programs that they wanted to provide, like college prep, tutoring. But, and a more appealing side of the, of the playground and the facilities made me get involved. My entire family started going to El Centro. Uh, my brother went to summer school, where they took full advantage of that playground. And, uh, I could guarantee you again that their system goes from elementary school all the way to university, where I could tell you that I just graduated from UC Santa Barbara this past summer. Thanks to them, and I believe that that shows an accomplishment of what they could do to so many other kids. Uh, thank you.
Welcome.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Jackie Vargas, y le pido al señor Eric Garcetti que por favor no quite el patio de Centro de Pueblo, porque los está quitándoles a los niños el patio y eso los va a afectar. El patio de Centro de Pueblo nos ha ayudado porque durante el verano nos abrimos en la casa y ellos nos invitan a eventos para que nos diviertan mucho. En el patio de Centro de Pueblo nos ponen actividades y después ponen movies para que familias vengan y pasen una buena tarde en el patio de Centro de Pueblo. Atentamente, Jackie Vargas.
Momento. I, persona for try to say-
Where's our? Oh, we were just, we were just informed that, uh, our interpreter was in a minor auto accident, so if we could get some assistance. Ms., uh, Ms. Martinez will do it. Ms., Ms. Martinez will do it.
Oh.
Speak for me.
Gracias, gracias.
Hi, my name is Jackie Vargas, and I would like, I would like to tell Eric Garcetti to please do not take out the patio in Centro de Pueblo because it's gonna affect the kids. And, and the patio de Centro de Pueblo, um, they help us because in the summer, we're bored at home, and they invite us to events so we could have fun. And they put activities and movies so families could come and have a good time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heidi Vasquez, and I'm gonna start off on get, just get right on the point. Mitch, on your website, it states, and I quote, "Mitch is deeply passionate about giving back to his community and supporting families, but you're doing the opposite. This playground is not just benches and grass. It is where I grew up, my second home. If you tear it down, you're tearing down my second home and the children behind me." I have anxiety, I have anxiety, so being up here is really brave of me. I'm shaking right now. But, El Centro and the playground is where I go to relax myself. When I go, I can't do that at Echo Park. It's already changing enough. See, being a Latina woman is hard enough, getting the looks. I entered here, and the security automatically spoke to me in Spanish. I speak English. I speak English and Spanish. But Centro has helped me just express my culture, and that's something that I love, because, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Ms. Martinez, are your services needed, or we?
Okay, my name is Maria Vasquez, and I am the grandmother of the little girl who just spoke. I also want, I'm here to support- I also want, I'm here to support not to close the playground at the Centro del Pueblo.
It's necessary to let them open because it's beautiful to see the families that go with the children.
I'm asking for you to keep it open because it's very nice to see the families and the children that use it.
They have a lot of programs, they put movies. It's necessary to have this center.
Okay, they put a lot of events together and movies, and it's very nice to have that playground open.
We'd rather have them there, standing on the streets, doing bad things, doing...
I prefer that children be there instead of being out in the streets and causing problems and getting into other trouble.
Because our youth is being lost to drugs and crime and street gangs in the area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
See, if we could get, I'm trying to get everybody up here, so help me out a little bit. David Diaz, Mark Wilkins, Robert Aguayo, Dr. Freddie Perez, Marco Juarez. Please come forward, please quickly, if I call your name, doesn't matter the order, just come up and identify yourself. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is David Diaz. I'm the former director of Urban Studies at California State, Cal State LA. Sometimes we have public policy proposals that clash. And in this one, we have a entity that prevents people from getting involved in gangs and drugs, which is the reason this proposal for housing at a very poor location is occurring. It's in the Ramparts Division, which is the most violent precinct in Los Angeles, only four square miles. It's in the Westlake-Echo Park-Pico Union area, which has the largest deficit of open space in the United States. It is also one of the most successful open spaces in the history of this city. If you look at the square footage of this park versus Echo Park, it's astronomical. It probably has one of the most highest user ships of the city. There's a lot of things that needed to be explained. Replacement for this, impacts on the gang intervention programs, better location, impacts on the economics of the city.
Thank you, sir.
We have to find a different location. Thank you.
Thank you. Please identify yourself and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Robert Aguayo. I'm the deputy director of El Centro del Pueblo. I've been involved with El Centro del Pueblo for over 45 years. I'm a former client of El Centro del Pueblo. I grew up in the Echo Park-Tempel Borja community. And I wanted to say, the bottom line with this situation is that this project would totally eliminate our efforts to be able to bring recreation, outdoor recreation, to the youth in our community. Although we hear that this project will build some alternative recreational space within the project, our experience has been in years past that our youth would not be accepted in these type of locations. So I urge this city council to look at what can be done to find alternative locations as opposed to the location that they're looking at. We have invited councilmember Mitchell Farrell and CD 13 to come to three different community forums, and they have never appeared at the community forums. And so that's why we're here today. We came to you guys for help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Yes, identify yourself.
Greetings and good morning, everyone. My name is Victoria Jax, and I am a parent and a longtime resident of the Elysian Heights Echo Park area, and I am here in favor of the El Centro del Pueblo Community Center's efforts to save our playground. It has been an honor and a privilege to be part of the El Centro family with the children's nonprofit organization Once Upon a December as a basis of operation for free ballet programs and services, serving the community since 2013. In 2016, Once Upon a December, it was granted nonprofit status by the state of California, and El Centro del Pueblo welcomed our program into their indoor and outdoor spaces for the children of Elysian Heights and Echo Park, where we've become nothing short of family. As someone born and raised in Echo Park, I can attest to the many changes that I have seen take place throughout the years, which many have had an adverse effect on the close-knit community that Echo Park I grew up in once had. And such as, I'm here today to show my support and favor of the El Centro, keeping our playground for the children in the community, as it has served as a safe haven and a place of unity for after a time of separation, so that we may continue our efforts to build a close-knit community again and expand what we can provide to the benefits of the families.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Welcome, sir. State your name.
Good morning. My name is Freddie, Dr. Freddie Perez. Thank you for allowing us to come over here, councilmembers. I am a nuptometrist. I developed the property where my office sits today, and I arrived in Echo Park 40 years ago. Soon after I arrived to Echo Park, I realized there was an issue with gang and graffiti and defacing private property. Soon I realized El Centro was the agency to go to, to help us with that kind of issue. I approached Centro. They have been very, very helpful in working with the youth in the community, and I really urge you to please, please find an alternative location for the playground. It's not a good location, and I'm sure there are some other ones that are much more suitable, more space, farther away from the, what's going on in Echo Park in the evenings, especially at night after 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Your Honor. My name is Mark Wilkins. I'm here to speak about the economy. There are a lot of great jobs in traditional energy, and hundreds of thousands of families still depend on the income those hard-working men and women generate. Please remember those jobs when we talk about and vote on the future of energy. And it's very imperative that you keep the playgrounds open so that, you know, the kids can have a safe haven, they look forward to it at the end of the day, to have a safe place to hang out, to keep them away from, you know, whatever it is that would make them be afraid. Please keep this imperative, that you keep the playgrounds open. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Marco Juarez, and I'm here again to please stop city inspectors and investigators. Can you please, I have a copy for each of you guys to deliver. And can you please, I'd like to record to reflect, Monsieur, it says my opinion that this important message is on record, and since I've been here many times, asking you to stop city inspectors and investigators corruption, and please force public servants to stop harassment, intimidation, retaliation, threats to disabled tenants and low-income families, and to stop helping steal money from all the tenants. And that's many agencies, and I'm even having names and everything to give you before, and this time I give you the copies for you to look at it, and please help us. We need help as a disabled tenant and low-income family to stop all criminal activity by public servants. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Christian Mendez. Do we have Christian Mendez?
Save our playground.
No, 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 come on out. We let everybody speak. We still have a lot of work to do. You're not helping your cause. Please. So do we have Christian Mendez? No Christian?
I'm here to...
Could you guys allow this person to speak? Please, you're disrupting the meeting.
Save our playground.
Okay.
Save the playground.
No, we just give you time.
Save our playground. 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 Save our playground.
Okay, before I call on you, sir, I want to recognize Mr. O'Farrell, noting that we are in the public comment, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very, very brief. So what we're doing is we're evaluating this city-owned lot that is currently under lease month-to-month by El Centro del Pueblo. I have been a supporter, funder in word, and indeed, resource provider for El Centro del Pueblo now for going on 18 years. I believe in the mission. I will always believe in their mission. This space can accommodate up to 100 units of permanent supportive housing, and also the uses that are currently being utilized by El Centro del Pueblo. So I welcome anyone who's still here to be part of this conversation. We've had five meetings at my office with you, with El Centro del Pueblo, open houses, countless meetings in the community about this proposal. So I invite you to be part of this conversation so that we can talk about solutions, because we can accommodate both, and I look forward to my continuing relationship with El Centro del Pueblo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. But members, I see you, Mr. Sedia, this item is not on the agenda. I gave him an opportunity to just say a few minutes, we're going through public comment right now, so Mr. Sedia.
I...
And please, city attorney, help them. I want to make sure that they speak, you know, that there are limitations here.
Mr. President, with all due respect, I appreciate that, and I accept your invitation, Mr. O'Farrell, as I always do, and always want to bring my experiences and the resources to bear on this. But in particular, it's important to note, and it's the only reason, Mr. President, why I insist on speaking, is that 60% of the people who get serviced by El Centro live in my district. As you know, we border each other. And so this is across the street. You heard our people talk about it. It services Westlake. We share that community. It services Pico Union exclusively in my district. And so it's wholly appropriate when 60% of the people who are serviced by El Centro will be impacted. It's an impact, a direct impact on my district. I want to offer to you to do the, to work with you. We've had the same challenges in the Northeast and other parts of the city with respect to parking lots. There's a parking lot right across the street that's absolutely 100% appropriate, and we would love to work with you on that, but clearly...
Okay, wait, wait. Okay, Mr. Sedia.
Clearly, let's put the children first.
Okay.
Let's put the children first.
No, okay, now we're gonna go back to general public comment. Mr., identify yourself, and after you, I'm looking for James, Linda, Lu... Whoa, whoa, whoa. After this gentleman, I'm looking for James, Luis Vasquez, Stephanie, Kareem, and Nicole. So please come line up, identify yourself.
My name is Christian Mendez, and I am here on behalf of ARMS Organization, and there is a better future where there is no gang banging and there is in LA. We're here basically, I'm here to tell you guys that this organization has helped me, it's helped my family, it's helped me with job placement, and it's a good resource for the community, and that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning, City Council.
James?
Good morning, City Council. My name is James Hicks. I'm an Uber driver. I've been an Uber driver for about three and a half years. I work about 40 hours or more a week. We are here, Drivers Together, as part of an organization called Rideshare Drivers United. We're the largest rideshare organization in the state of California. We represent about 5,000 Lyft and Uber drivers in the LA metro area and in chapters across the state. We're an independent organization of drivers led by drivers, and we're fighting for our democratically voted for Drivers' Bill of Rights, which you have in your packets. We are a group that bravely took on Lyft and Uber in a couple of strikes, one in March, another one that was a national and international strike on May 8th. We struck so that we could draw attention to the kind of exploitation that we have going on in our industry, how Uber and Lyft are ignoring basic labor standards. And we had coordinated strikes across the world, London, Sao Paulo, and Nigeria. The thousands of drivers who took action that week, we brought a clear message to the world that Lyft and Uber, they're both impoverishing their drivers in order to enrich themselves.
Thank you, James. Next speaker. Luis. Yes, sir.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Luis Vasquez. I've been driving for the rideshare industry for the past three years. I drive 50 to 60 hours per week. I'm a single dad, and this is how I support my kid and my mom. I had to leave construction after a back injury. When I received a customer complaint a few weeks ago, I was deactivated from Uber, and I had to figure out what to do. With unemployment pay, I lasted about six weeks of pay. Even though I'm driving full-time for Lyft again, it's not enough to live. We have a lot of overhead expenses, and none of this is reimbursed. Most days, we're making less than minimum wage. Now, I know many drivers who are actually leaving their cars. They don't make enough money to pay rent in LA. That's why I joined Rideshare Driver United, and we're asking you to support our bills right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please come forward. Please come forward and identify. Stephanie, maybe?
Hello, my name is Stephanie Sanchez. I'm a full-time rideshare driver for Uber and Lyft. I've been driving for over four years. On average, I drive 60-plus hours a week, and that's just to get by. And this is because Uber and Lyft has cut the drivers' pay. Now, Uber and Lyft would have you believe that we're independent contractors, but we're not. So how it works is that we, when we turn on the app, we get a message in-app that says that we can't continue until we sign this updated contract. So we either accept the contract, or we're no longer working. We can no longer make money driving for Uber and Lyft. So we, basically, we have no choice. So I ask you to please, please support AB5 and regulate Uber and Lyft.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, City Councilmembers. My name is Kareem Bayumi. I've been driving with Uber and Lyft for over four years now. I drive an average of about 40 hours a week. Our Drivers' Bill of Rights is about the dignity and humanity of the drivers like us standing here before you, but it's also about the community, the communities that we live in. Lyft and Uber's labor standards are actually causing problems in our community. We're below, minimum wages actually causes homelessness among drivers. The low pay is also forcing us to stay on the road for longer hours, way beyond what is safe. And the companies continue to hire more and more drivers every day, which is hurting our ability to earn, which is also causing congestion issues. We know that we need a cap on the number of drivers out there, and in addition, we need your support for a minimum wage. We also stand here for the safety of drivers and passengers, and what Lyft and Uber do for drivers and passengers approaches is not effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Yes.
Hello, my name is Nicole Moore. I'm a part-time Lyft driver. I've been driving for two, more than two years. I'm angry because of what I see happening in our city. I talk to drivers every day who are working more and more hours, and some of them are choosing to live in their cars because they can no longer afford rent. These companies are not listening to what drivers need and what works for the city of LA and our communities. We must put them in check. We are here today to ask for your support because we believe that this group can help us through regulation of rideshare and also by supporting our lawmakers in Sacramento who are trying to pass a law that would codify the dynamics decision and make us do basic labor rights as all employees. Please support AB5. Please work with us for driver regulation, rideshare regulation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I could get, okay, okay, Corey Smith, Corey Smith and Antonio Ramirez. Corey Smith, please, Corey, come on up. And Ms. Ramirez, if you're here, please get behind Mr. Smith. Yes, sir.
Just signed up, just to forewarn the public in case there was anything offensive, that this is a public forum, that all speech is protected. So if there's anything that's said, apologize for anything in advance, but I think everything's been okay, so. On that note, based on what they were saying, I agree with the, with the rideshare, with the companies, it's growing, so the drivers, they grow, you know, the pool of them just keeps growing and growing, and it makes the wages really hard, you know, the only way to keep them getting money. You know, the only way to keep them getting money is to keep slashing the prices, but it makes them drive more and more and more to make the same money. So it's like, it's really painful. So I just, I concur with what they're saying. That's it, though.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. Please let us vote all Democrats out for they created the chronic massive homelessness and poverty. Furthermore, Jackie Goldberg, take your head out of your ass. Please look at the beautiful Music Center, Grand Park, that has become a melting gangland playground for all the Chango Latino wetbacks, gangbangers who joined alliances with the violent Skid Row niggers and filthy nasty white trash and other homeless junkies. These, excuse me, these criminal offenders have now taken the Music Center, Grand Park hostage and created an unsafe environment in a hostile combative area like we have it here. And the law-abiding American citizens are being attacked and subjected to harassment, theft, vandalism, shanks, weapons, graffiti, gang stalkings, mob lynchings, drug deals, drug usage, stabbings, and rapes and violence and theft in bathrooms in Block 1 and 4. They plug up their toilets with clothing, food, and they stash their and hide their drugs and contraband throughout the park in the shrubberies and bushes. They provoke violence and we need ice.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. No, no, no. Okay, everybody has a right to speak. Now that concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, that brings this council where?
Item 13, which is scheduled for a closed session discussion.
Okay. Sergeants, could you clear the chambers? And also, Madam Clerk, there's no multi, so we're just, all public comment has been satisfied. So if we could clear the chambers.
People come to the market and they find their favorite restaurants and they kind of get into the same habit, but there's so many great places to try. So the idea was, let's do one big event. You can get samples from everybody. And here we are, 10 years later, and everything's great.
I have some chili pasta and fried chicken with lemonade. I'm just getting started.
We are standing on the great lawn of Hollyhock House, which is located in the heart of Hollywood at Barnsdall Art Park. And we're here to celebrate the UNESCO designation of this iconic Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece.
Having that UNESCO imprimatur means that everybody now will want to see it and we can't wait to welcome them here.
Griffith Park is just literally across the street and you could really have a great day coming here and then going with your family up into the Griffith Park or just staying here in the park and enjoying the wonders and beauty of this existing park.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watch Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watch Towers Arts Center Campus. Come visit the Watch Towers Arts Center Campus where you'll see exhibitions, the Watch Towers of Simon Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watch Towers are truly unique and received Cultural Heritage Monument status from the city of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watch Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watch Towers Arts Center is a guardian of the Watch Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adoption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watch Towers Arts Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
We're here to celebrate the last film of the season of the Silver Lake Picture Show here in Silver Lake in the 13th District. And they're showing The Big Lebowski, which was filmed in the 13th District.
I'm here for the Silver Lake Picture Show. My buddy Vince puts this thing on, so last month of the year, I thought I'd go all out.
You know, that's just like your opinion, man.
It's free admission for everyone because this is a community-building effort and you get to enjoy classic films at the same time. So I've always been a supporter since being in office in 2013, every year.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for L.A. history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of L.A.'s architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, in-made marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument Designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to The Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company, and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
We are providing free backpacks and school supplies and other educational materials to over 1,800 youth in the community. This event is actually one of the most popular events. In fact, the first family started lining up at 11:00 a.m. the day before, which is indicative of what the need that we have in this community.
It's just a relief for them, a little breather, right? So maybe now they can get them something else that they may need because now the school supplies are covered.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever-iconic LAX Theme Building. The LAX Theme Building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm, Pierrra &amp; Luck, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stuck out. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century Bonnet Gouvy architecture. The LAX Theme Building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
The goal of Grammy Camp is to take these students who have a passion for multiple areas of music, on the business side, on the technical side, and on the performance side, and give them a sense of what the music industry is like and get them developing a plan to help them reach that goal because that's what gives them the best chance of being successful. If I do some of the things that we're talking about here and think of other things, I can be where these guys are.
People come to the market and they find their favorite restaurants and they kind of get into the same habit, but there's so many great places to try. So the idea was, let's do one big event, you can get samples from everybody, and here we are 10 years later and everything's great.
I have some chili pasta and fried chicken with lemonade. I'm just getting started.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
...to plan for my future...
...to plan for my family...
...provides a peace of mind...
...having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
...gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
...or near my park...
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
We are standing on the great lawn of Hollyhock House, which is located in the heart of Hollywood at Barnsdall Art Park, and we're here to celebrate the UNESCO designation of this iconic Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece.
Having that UNESCO imprimatur means that everybody now will want to see it, and we can't wait to welcome them here.
Griffith Park is just literally across the street, and you could really have a great day coming here and then going with your family up into the Griffith Park, or just staying here in the park and enjoying the wonders and beauty of this existing park.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watts Towers.
Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watts Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watts Towers Art Center Campus, where you'll see exhibitions, the Watts Towers of Simon &amp; Ordier, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watts Towers are truly unique and received Cultural Heritage Monument Status from the city of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watts Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watts Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watts Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adoption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watts Towers Arts Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
We're here to celebrate the last film of the season of the Silver Lake Picture Show here in Silver Lake in the 13th District, and they're showing The Big Lebowski, which was filmed in the 13th District.
I'm here for the Silver Lake Picture Show. My buddy Vince puts his thing on, so last one of the year, I thought I'd go all out.
You know, that's just like your opinion, man.
It's free admission for everyone because this is a community-building effort, and you get to enjoy classic films at the same time. So I've always been a supporter since being in office in 2013, every year.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as "The Last of the Great Train Stations." It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument Designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972, and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to The Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and The Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
We are providing free backpacks and school supplies and other educational materials to over 1,800 youth in the community. This event is actually one of the most popular events. In fact, the first family started lining up at 11:00 AM the day before, which is indicative of what the need that we have in this community.
It's just a, it's a relief for them, a little breather, right? So maybe now they can get them something else that they may need because now the school supplies are covered.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever iconic LAX Theme Building. The LAX Theme Building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm, Pierrra &amp; Luckman, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Googie architecture. The LAX Theme Building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles, and the futuristic designs intended to convey new prosperity and embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
The goal of Grammy Camp is to take these students who have a passion for multiple areas of music, on the business side, on the technical side, and on the performance side, and give them a sense of what the music industry is like, and get them developing a plan to help them reach that goal, because that's what gives them the best chance of being successful. If I do some of the things that we're talking about here and think of other things, I can be where these guys are.
People come to the market and they find their favorite restaurants and they kind of get into the same habit, but there's so many great places to try. So the idea was, let's do one big event, you can get samples from everybody, and here we are 10 years later and everything's great.
I have some chili pasta and fried chicken with lemonade. I'm just getting started.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
...to plan for my future...
...to plan for my family...
...provides a peace of mind...
...having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
...gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
...or near my park...
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
We are standing on the great lawn of Hollyhock House, which is located in the heart of Hollywood at Barnsdall Art Park, and we're here to celebrate the UNESCO designation of this iconic Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece.
Having that UNESCO imprimatur means that everybody now will want to see it, and we can't wait to welcome them here.
Griffith Park is just literally across the street, and you could really have a great day coming here and then going with your family up into the Griffith Park, or just staying here in the park and enjoying the wonders and beauty of this existing park.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watch Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watch Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watch Towers Art Center Campus where you'll see exhibitions, the Watch Towers of Simon &amp; Ordier, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel covered with mortar and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watch Towers are truly unique and received Cultural Heritage Monument status from the City of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watch Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watch Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watch Towers. It provides programs designed for cultural enrichment and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adoption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watch Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
We're here to celebrate the last film of the season of the Silverlake Picture Show here in Silverlake in the 13th District, and they're showing The Big Lebowski, which was filmed in the 13th District.
I'm here for the Silverlake Picture Show. My buddy Vince puts this thing on, so last one of the year, I thought I'd go all out.
You know, that's just like your opinion, man.
It's free admission for everyone because this is a community building effort and you get to enjoy classic films at the same time. So I've always been a supporter since being in office in 2013, every year.
Not it, not it. Again? Dad?
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the City of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument Designation from the City of Los Angeles in 1972, and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to The Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
We are providing free backpacks and school supplies and other educational materials to over 1,800 youth in the community. This event is actually one of the most popular events. In fact, the first families started lining up at 11:00 a.m. the day before, which is indicative of what the need that we have in this community.
It's just a, it's a relief for them, a little breather, right? So maybe now they can get them something else that they may need because now the school supplies are covered.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrara &amp; Luckman, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the City of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Doogie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic designs intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
The goal of Grammy Camp is to take these students who have a passion for multiple areas of music, on the business side, on the technical side, and on the performance side, and give them a sense of what the music industry is like and get them developing a plan to help them reach that goal because that's what gives them the best chance of being successful. If I do some of the things that we're talking about here and think of other things, I can be where these guys are.
People come to the market and they find their favorite restaurants and they kind of get into the same habit, but there's so many great places to try. So the idea was let's do one big event, you can get samples from everybody, and here we are 10 years later and everything's great.
I have some chili pasta and fried chicken with lemonade. I'm just getting started.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides peace of mind...
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park...
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County...
Knowing when you need it most.
We are standing on the great lawn of Hollyhock House, which is located in the heart of Hollywood at Barnsdall Art Park, and we're here to celebrate the UNESCO designation of this iconic Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece.
Having that UNESCO imprimatur means that everybody now will want to see it, and we can't wait to welcome them here.
Griffith Park is just literally across the street, and you could really have a great day coming here and then going with your family up into the Griffith Park, or just staying here in the park and enjoying the wonders and beauty of this existing park.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watch Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watch Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watch Towers Art Center Campus where you'll see exhibitions, the Watch Towers of Simon &amp; Ordier, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel covered with mortar and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watch Towers are truly unique and received... The Watch Towers are truly unique and received Cultural Heritage Monument status from the city of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watch Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watch Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watch Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adaption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watch Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
We're here to celebrate the last film of the season of the Silver Lake Picture Show here in Silver Lake in the 13th District, and they're showing The Big Lebowski, which was filmed in the 13th District.
I'm here for the Silver Lake Picture Show. My buddy Vince puts this thing on, so last month of the year, I thought I'd go all out.
You know, that's just like your opinion, man.
It's free admission for everyone because this is a community building effort and you get to enjoy classic films at the same time, so I've always been a supporter since being in office in 2013, every year.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station.
Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument Designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center, it is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to the Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
We are providing free backpacks and school supplies and other educational materials to over 1,800 youth in the community. This event is actually one of the most popular events. In fact, the first families started lining up at 11:00 AM the day before, which is indicative of what the need that we have in this community.
It's just a relief for them, a little breather, right? So maybe now they can get them something else that they may need because now the school supplies are covered.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrara &amp; Luckler, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Doogie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic designs intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
The goal of Grammy Camp is to take these students who have a passion for multiple areas of music, on the business side, on the technical side, and on the performance side, and give them a sense of what the music industry is like and get them developing a plan to help them reach that goal because that's what gives them the best chance of being successful. If I do some of the things that we're talking about here and think of other things, I can be where these guys are.
People come to the market and they find their favorite restaurants and they kind of get into the same habit, but there's so many great places to try. So the idea was let's do one big event, you can get samples from everybody, and here we are 10 years later and everything's great.
I have some chili pasta and fried chicken with lemonade. I'm just getting started.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family... Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
We are standing on the great lawn of Hollyhock House, which is located in the heart of Hollywood at Barnsdall Art Park, and we're here to celebrate the UNESCO designation of this iconic Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece.
Having that UNESCO imprimatur means that everybody now will want to see it, and we can't wait to welcome them here.
Griffith Park is just literally across the street, and you could really have a great day coming here and then going with your family up into the Griffith Park, or just staying here in the park and enjoying the wonders and beauty of this existing park.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watch Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watch Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watch Towers Art Center Campus, where you'll see exhibitions, the Watch Towers of Simon &amp; Ordier, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel covered with mortar and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watch Towers are truly unique and received Cultural Heritage Monument status from the city of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watch Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watch Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watch Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adaption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watch Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
We're here to celebrate the last film of the season of the Silver Lake Picture Show here in Silver Lake in the 13th District, and they're showing The Big Lebowski, which was filmed in the 13th District.
I'm here for the Silver Lake Picture Show. My buddy Vince puts this thing on, so last month of the year, I thought I'd go all out.
You know, that's just like your opinion, man.
It's free admission for everyone because this is a community building effort and you get to enjoy classic films at the same time, so I've always been a supporter since being in office in 2013, every year.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as "the last of the great train stations." It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument Designation from the City of Los Angeles in 1972, and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to The Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
We are providing free backpacks and school supplies and other educational materials to over 1,800 youth in the community. This event is actually one of the most popular events. In fact, the first family started lining up at 11:00 AM the day before, which is indicative of the need that we have in this community.
It's just, it's a relief for them, a little breather, right? So maybe now they can get them something else that they may need, because now the school supplies are covered.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever-iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrin &amp; Luck, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received Cultural Historic Status from the City of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern goofy architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic designs intended to convey new prosperity and embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
The goal of Grammy Camp is to take these students who have a passion for multiple areas of music, on the business side, on the technical side, and on the performance side, and give them a sense of what the music industry is like, and get them developing a plan to help them reach that goal, because that's what gives them the best chance of being successful. If I do some of the things that we're talking about here and think of other things, I can be where these guys are.
People come to the market and they find their favorite restaurants and they kind of get into the same habit, but there's so many great places to try. So the idea was, let's do one big event, you can get samples from everybody, and here we are 10 years later and everything's great.
I have some chili pasta and fried chicken with lemonade. I'm just getting started.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides a peace of mind...
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park...
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County...
Knowing when you need it most.
We are standing on the great lawn of Hollyhock House, which is located in the heart of Hollywood at Barnsdall Art Park, and we're here to celebrate the UNESCO designation of this iconic Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece.
Having that UNESCO imprimatur means that everybody now will want to see it, and we can't wait to welcome them here.
Griffith Park is just literally across the street, and you could really have a great day coming here and then going with your family up into the Griffith Park, or just staying here in the park and enjoying the wonders and beauty of this existing park.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge; in Chicago, it's the Bean; in New York, it is the Statue of Liberty; in South Los Angeles, it's the Watch Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watch Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watch Towers Art Center Campus, where you'll see exhibitions, the Watch Towers of Simon &amp; Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watch Towers are truly unique and received Cultural Heritage Monument status from the City of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watch Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watch Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watch Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adaption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watch Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
We're here to celebrate the last film of the season of the Silver Lake Picture Show here in Silver Lake in the 13th District, and they're showing The Big Lebowski, which was filmed in the 13th District.
I'm here for the Silver Lake Picture Show. My buddy Vince puts this thing on, so last one of the year, I thought I'd go all out.
You know, that's just like your opinion, man.
It's free admission for everyone, because this is a community-building effort, and you get to enjoy classic films at the same time. So I've always been a supporter since being in office in 2013, every year.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as "the last of the great train stations." It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument Designation from the City of Los Angeles in 1972, and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to The Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover... I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
We are providing free backpacks and school supplies and other educational materials to over 1,800 youth in the community. This event is actually one of the most popular events. In fact, the first families started lining up at 11:00 a.m. the day before, which is indicative of what the need that we have in this community.
It's just a, it's a relief for them, a little breather, right? So maybe now they can get them something else that they may need because now the school supplies are covered.
Okay, Madam City Attorney, do you want to make an announcement on our closed session?
Yes, for item number 13, no reportable action under the Brown Act was taken by this body.
Mr. Rudy, you have an announcement?
Excuse me, Madam President, we also have counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Hold on for just a second, Madam City Clerk.
Madam President, thank you so very much. The Health, Education, Neighborhoods, Parks, Arts, and River Committee will be postponed for 30 minutes, and it'll start at 1:30.
Thank you very much, that's noted. Madam City Clerk, what's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Hold on, referred members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, can we all rise for adjourned motions? Can we all rise for adjourned motions? Are there any adjourned motions to my right? Any adjourned motions to my left? Mr. Caress, do you have an adjourned motion? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn this council meeting in the memory of Joseph Frank Montagna, who passed away at the age of 86 in Palm Desert, California from complications of Alzheimer's disease. Joe is the beloved father of LA City's Chief of Our Employee Benefits Division, Steve Montagna. A homegrown Angelino, Joe was born in Los Angeles in 1933. He attended Loyola High School and graduated from Loyola University with a degree in Civil Engineering. He served two years in the U.S. Army, followed by a lifelong career in engineering, including co-ownership of the firm Geotechnical Consultants, which brought him great success. He retired in 1986 at the age of 53, but continued providing insurance, excuse me, engineering consulting for decades. Joe had three children from his first marriage. He adored his children, and some of his fondest memories were of the many trips they took to Carlsbad, to Hawaii, across the USA, and abroad. He remarried in 1981 to Mary Lou Webb, and Joe and Mary Lou were devoted to their immediate and extended families. They also loved traveling and brought the two together by becoming avid genealogists, sleuthing for ancestors across the globe. And one of Joe's proudest accomplishments was establishing contact with Italian relatives in Amalfi and Agnano, Italy, and in Montreal, California. His efforts joined families that otherwise would have remained lost from one another. Joe lived in Glendale, California for more than 55 years. In 2018, he and Mary Lou moved to their vacation home in Rancho Mirage, where they enjoyed desert living with family and friends. Joe is survived by Mary Lou and children Teresa, Laura, Lisa, Stephen, stepson Rick, and grandchildren Marco, Jeffrey, and Angelina. He has also survived by a legacy of uncommon grace, selflessness, and compassion for others. Joe is distinguished by his great optimism and faith in people. All who came into his presence were warned by his gentle nature, witty humor, relentless cheerfulness, and ability to find the bright side of every situation. Mass and burial services will be held on Monday, August 19th at noon at San Fernando Mission Chapel and Mortuary. And in lieu of flowers, the family requests that memorial contributions be made to Eisenhower Memory Care Center 42201, Beacon Hill Number A, Palm Desert 92211. This nonprofit organization excels in providing daycare for the memory impaired, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Caress. Any other adjourned motions? Yes?
And Stephen is here with us, so wanted to recognize that.
Thank you. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you. It is the first designation of its kind in Los Angeles. The famed Hollyhock House has been named a UNESCO World Heritage Site. There are a total of 878 World Heritage Sites, and 20 of them are in the U.S. And now, LA joins that list.
Frank Lloyd Wright's Hollyhock House becomes the only Cultural Treasures designation in the state of California.
It took time, it took patience, but we all made it happen.
We are standing on the great lawn of Hollyhock House, which is located in the heart of Hollywood at Barnsdall Art Park, and we're here to celebrate the UNESCO designation of this iconic Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece.
The depth and breadth of any society is reflected in its arts and culture. And at a time when the city was, in a sense, looking at the fiscal cliff, this city doubled down on culture.
Having that UNESCO in primatur means that everybody now will want to see it, and we can't wait to welcome them here.
Many people don't realize that this all sits inside of a public park. Griffith Park is just literally across the street, and you could really have a great day coming here and then going with your family up into the Griffith Park or just staying here in the park and enjoying the wonders and beauty of this existing park.
Next week, we take a closer look at Hollyhock House and what the designation means for the City of LA. Stay tuned. A new effort to keep e-scooter riders off the sidewalk gets underway. A community cleanup brings neighbors together, and city council members push to reduce gun violence. All this in City Beat. LA City Council Presidents Herb Wesson and Councilmember Greg Smith have introduced a resolution in LA City Council calling on the State of California and the federal government to pass legislation that will reduce gun violence in the U.S. The announcement comes on the heels of three mass shootings occurring within a month's time. Chinatown in downtown LA got a makeover as a bulky items pickup and area cleanup took place thanks to Councilmember Gil Sadio's office.
There's always going to be trash around, but if we help clean the community and more people join, it makes LA look nice.
E-scooters are seen everywhere, but many riders don't follow the rules and ride on sidewalks instead of the street. That's why Councilmember Paul Caress is promoting safe and responsible riding through bright yellow decals in his district, reminding riders that it's illegal to ride on sidewalks.
We want to get the word out that it's both illegal and dangerous, and the city is starting to enforce that regulation.
Last week, we introduced you to some special women who offer a platform